For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. In attendance is Chairperson Fosdick, Vice Chair Heft, Secretary-Treasurer Carroll, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember Gearbaugh, Staff Rep., Police Chief Hart, Commission Members Beardsley, Troika, and Young. Also, we have Chris Atkins, Interim City Manager, Mike Green, and Deputy Clerk Rich. Are you here?
Yes.
She's on the line, okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
It's been moved, Marrow, second. Dan, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. There's a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 23, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved. Councilmember Gearbaugh, second, Commissioner Young. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ayes have it. Citizen comments, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments, under reasonable limits, which may be established by this public body. The person is requested, but not required, to state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Okay. We'll start with public hearings, 2020. There's an application from Danny Barry of Blake Anthony Holmes, Inc., for the zoning amendment to change, for the zoning amendment to change the zoning of two parcels totaling six acres, from industrial one dash two, industrial, to R3 multifamily residential at 7181 North Maple Road, Saline, Michigan, parcel numbers 181231 to 10015, and 181231 to 10 dash 019. Chris, you're up. You're mute.
That's all I said. Did you get it all?
Yep. Well, thank you.
No, like you said, this is to rezone two parcels over there on the southeast intersection of Woodlawn, just south of the southeast intersection of Woodland and North Maple Road. They are two separate parcels. The front parcel, which is on Maple Road, currently has the house on, the single-family home on it, which I believe that last use was for rental. And the easternmost property is vacant. It has access to Woodland Drive on the other side of the existing building there. It's currently zoned I-2. The nearest residential is across the street, which is R1A, which is single-family residential, and that's site to the assisted living home. The, on the future land use map, the westernmost parcel, which is along North Maple Road, is for office services, designated as office service and future land use. And the one to the east is designated as industrial, to remain the same as now. You know, we went through and we pulled straight out of the master plan what they're looking for with the, these types of uses, and in that particular area, and that being the predominant industrial area within the city, back in there, all those parcels along Woodlawn. Little bit, just went through the topology kind of standard. And then, what we also like to do in these cases is list all the appropriate uses or permitted uses in the R3, or in the potential residential, potential zoning district. So those are on the following page. They are a little confusing, because it kind of steps down. The R3A, anything that's permitted in the R2, and the R1, and the R2 is anything within a 1RA, or R1A. So it's mostly residential, residential type, or public type uses. So it can be single-family home and multifamily home back in there. But then you have to also look at density calculations and the amount of buildings that they're putting in. I mean, we are familiar with what Mr. Barry is seeking to, or why he's having, is requesting this to be rezoned. But we need to look at all the uses, you know, in the event that something like the, if it is rezoned, and something doesn't work, and the development doesn't go forth, there's other uses that could go there that may or may not be appropriate for the area. Traffic impact, obviously, pretty, it's, they're vacant properties, with the exception of the home, which I'm not sure anybody lives in it. General rule of thumb for uses in the R3 residential uses, or any sort of residential use, the amount of traffic volume that's generated is 10 trips per day per household or unit, which is going to be a lot more, more intense, increase to the traffic volume there along Maple and, and Woodlawn, or, sorry, the road there to the north, where it's an industrial use, or an office use, or something of the sort. You know, typically, you're going to have, if it's industrial, you could have the heavy traffic coming in as far as, you know, the actual weight, you know, larger trucks. Or if it's office, you have traffic coming at certain times of the day, in the morning, in the evening, and then throughout, depending on what the workday is. But if this were going to be residential, we would obviously recommend that a traffic study be done, just so we could have some more concrete numbers for that. So, you know, just like with any rezoning, our focus is always on the master plan and the future land use map. And that's usually, you know, if it's consistent with that, it's a, it's a pretty good catalyst to allow for this to be zoned, whereas this isn't. There is multiple residential of sorts across the Maple there. But we don't believe that this type of zoning is really characteristic of the area, to be in between industrial and, and public use there, to the south with the courthouse and post office and what have you. Still have.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay, there is a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the report dated October 6, 2020, from the city planner at.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Morrow, seconded by Young, to acknowledge receipt of the report. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Okay, applicant, you get a good 10 minutes. Yeah, well, why don't you?
No, it's not, it's not. Good evening, commissioners. Do you mind if I post out so you can hear me clear?
Yeah, but talk loud, Danny.
I want to, most of you probably don't know who I am. I was here a couple, three years ago for the corner of Waterworks and our Versaline Road. I have the project escape point, single story. Wasn't intended, but it's fallen into, it's pretty much a senior community. I think my average age is probably second or four there. That's the type of product that I want to do here. And I want to flashback four years ago. I had to do the same thing. I had to come in, rezonate because of the rezoned office. At that time, it was consensus, I think, of everybody, that the office market has softened, and this did a good use for the property. I would think that all of you are happy with what we ended up doing there, with that project, which maintained 100% occupancy every day. We've never had a vacancy there, and we have a waiting list to get in. Which then gets me to the point of why I'm looking always in this community to try to find a piece that we can do a similar project. So I just want to hit the three bullet points that Chris mentioned. Currently, the use on that property is multifamily, with that house and that barn. But the master plan uses, as he said, is office. The building right next door, or the property right next door to this, is office and has vacancy. As I'm sure all of you are aware, the office market has absolutely taken it on the chin. More people are working from home. The demand for it isn't there for new. I drove around the community just to see, I didn't write down everyone, but there are other office vacancies throughout the city, as every municipality, as well as the industrial side. The, I'm looking at my bullet points here. The, and then, also in that, because that was one large parcel at one time. So you have the office complex, you have the bowling alley. The bowling alley is not a use for industrial, but obviously, it was put in there probably a long time ago. So you have some property that's not really used to, being used, that's not in the current zoning of the property. We have a similar product right across the street. Our main access would be off Maple. There is, in the agreement, in the deed for the entire 12-acre parcel, there is a use or access easement, so we wouldn't put another approach on Maple. We would use the existing one. It's actually partially on this property. So it's a common drive. So we would be able to limit the, a curb cut on Maple. And that was one thing that I really liked about that piece, too, that it wasn't going to create another traffic situation going in and out. We also got the possibility of bringing a road out to Woodland as well, which then would end up having the traffic, like, for a left turn. On the master plan, I went, I went through it. I'm not going to say I went through with a fine two call, but I found the bullet points that I thought were interesting to this piece. It said that by 2040, 65 and over will double in the population of Salines. Twenty-eight, there will be 28% of your population. And I believe that building another product, like I have Cascade, Cascade, will, will really help that need be filled. As I said, we have a waiting list, so I know that the demand is there. And it also said that this type of product, not necessarily my product, but housing for the 65 and over community is encouraged. And that came right out of the master plan. In the four corners, if you look at them, they're, they're all kind of different. I mean, you have the multifamily residential right across the street, that senior living. You have office right next to me. You have industrial zoning, and then you have low-density residential on the other corner. So you really have a hybrid right on that corner of, of uses. If the multifamily wasn't right across the street, I would say that this makes no sense at all. But it is, and it's almost the same type of product. And then, just two parcels to the south, there was the township, I'm sorry, the city piece that was the old DPW that was industrial, that was rezoned for. Do they have multifamily there? Or, yeah?
Both hands, a hybrid.
It's, yeah, it's a hybrid. I thought it was a hybrid. So you do have it, just two parcels down. You have it across the street, so it wouldn't be out on, I so to say, because it is right in that area. The thing I want to talk about on the traffic, Chris was right, that on, on single family, they usually count 10 trips per, per day for, for house, or we call it. Multifamily, it's a little different number. According to the Traffic Institute engineers, for multifamily, it's .56 per dwelling unit, at, at peak hour, which would be about 19, 18 and a half, 19 peak trips per hour, or peak, yeah, peak hour trips. With that piece of property, could easily house a 10,000-square-foot office with a 40,000-square-foot industrial space. That would generate, in the neighborhood, a 36.7 peak trips per hour. So I don't necessarily think it would be more. And again, my community, with my tenants, I believe of the 16, 14 of them have one car. There's very, very few that have two cars. So it's a lot different than, than a house, where you usually will have two cars, maybe three, depending on the number of people. So I don't think the traffic burden would be quite as, to that extent, as it would if it was a single-family project. But I do understand what he was saying, that he's trying to give you all the options. You know, unless something happens to me, this is what I'm doing here, because I know the demand is there. That's all I can say.
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Said you consider a access on Woodland.
I, my, the drawing, did you, did you guys all see the sketch? Okay, so we don't have it on there, but we're playing with doing something out to Woodland. I actually have a building that's only 27 foot wide that could go there, which would then be able to make the connection out to Woodland. So again, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not going to do it by any stretch. I mean, I would definitely consider it, for sure, because it would, it would help the traffic.
Right there.
Yeah.
Certainly, that would be something to do.
Yeah. And I, and I do like, like I said, I already said this, but I like the fact that I'm not putting another curb cut out there. I, I think that is where you start having traffic issues, when you have an exit from an office complex, and an exit from whatever the other item is, that's only 100 feet away, near an intersection, with another one across the street, between the school traffic. You, you just create more of a problem with more approaches you have. So whoever put that access agreement in place, I thought was really using, had that, that approach would handle the whole 12 acres.
One of the concerns on that property is then the drainage, and figuring out how to figure all of that. And so, have you looked at how that would be handled, and would evolve the property right there?
Well, what we're looking at doing is not touching the existing drain for the property that's there. Not even using that, having our own, and separating the two. Because if we end up going into theirs, then it really hinders the entire parcel, bringing it to current standards. So if we can keep theirs the way it is, without touching it at all, we're not putting one drop in there, we would contain our own stormwater detention, similar to what I did at Cascade with underground storage. That would allow us to do what we, what we did. If we have to enlarge their pond, throw our water in it, it almost eliminates that whole back half of that property.
Yeah, generally, we don't go for that divorce. We try to stop it. In fact, I'm doing the planning, so we're wondering if there was any issue related to the other property, trying to split that all out. Sounds like.
Yeah, no, we, we looked at everything before we came here.
Any other questions? Cheryl, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Chris, can you explain the difference between R3A and R3? Seeing we've got a kind of back and forth on that.
I can pull it up, off the top of my head. No, I can't. I think it came down to density numbers, if I'm not mistaken. If you give me a second, I can have that answer for you.
I know that MR3 allows 14. We're only at roughly five. I mean, we're not even close. Maybe a little over five, we might hit six. Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're really well below that. And it's because of the product. If, if we did, you know, like some of the other product, they have in other communities, I could get to that number. But I don't want to do that there. I want to do this.
And I'm just curious, how many acres of 3, they know, depending on how the size of the lot. Does this bigger than the one, or what's the size?
This one's bigger. If I only had the office space acreage, it's very similar in size, different configurations, similar in size. But adding the second gap is, pretty much doubles it. And that industrial spot would be really, I mean, if someone put an office building on office piece, that industrial acreage would have no visibility at all. It'd be behind the bowling alley. You'd have that little skinny sliver, although you'd still have a connection point from Maple. But it would have no visibility. It would be a really, it'd almost have to be a single use for it to make sense, where they might have office connected to a warehouse. But to just have a warehouse that's separate from office on its own piece, outletting to Woodland, I think that landlord would have one heck of a time trying to fill that, that spot.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's one of the difficulties with that other. Another question I have for Chris is if we amend the master plan, would that be a different approach? Would that cause a saving?
I'm, I can barely hear you, Dan.
All right. The issue would be, is there a different approach? Would we amend the master plan, allow for this? Or are we still going to risk the issue of violating our overall planning?
You wouldn't have to amend the entire master plan, just, you know, the zoning map at this point. Maybe even the future land use map, to look at it that way, or, so that's taken care of. It's not, the way the master plan reads, it doesn't specify, you know, this site. It just talks about the industrial use being up there off of Woodland and, in that area. I, I don't think there's anything in there that would be detrimental. It, it wouldn't negate anything in the plan itself. I'd have to take another look. But I don't, I don't believe there's be anything that would, any adverse effects from that. And for the, the R1A, you know, like Danny was saying, the, the density, I don't have the density numbers in front of me, but setbacks are a little bit different for the front and side and rear. And if I, let me see if I can't find the density. Oh Danny, did you, did you mention what those density differences were? I couldn't.
I, I only, I only looked up the R3. I didn't look up the R3A. But in, our units are all two-bedroom, so it allows up to 14 per acre on a two-bedroom, or, which I don't have one bedrooms. It's up to 18 units per acre on a one-bedroom. And then I don't have three bedrooms, which are 11 per acre. So regardless of, then, I'm well below that density.
Yeah. Does, it does say in the description that the R3A is lower density than permitted in the R3. Let me see, maybe we'll find the. A permitted minimum lot area of 700 square feet for the first living unit, not less than 2,250 square feet of lot area for each additional dwelling unit, with one bedroom, and not less than 3,000 square feet of area, lot area, for each additional two-bedroom unit. Maximum density in the 3A is one-bedroom, you know, 12 per acre, 10 two-bedroom units per acre, and nine three-to-four-bedroom a, units per acre.
I guess my issue is just whether the maximum zoning would be the R3, whether the R3 is. Over zoning.
I only went to R3 because that's what Cascade was. I, I didn't even look. I just looked at what that was.
Yeah, and I didn't even know. I figured that's kind of what it was, but when I saw R3, this was up.
Any more questions, concerns? There is a motion to open the public hearing. I'll move it. It's been moved, Beardsley, seconded Hart, to open the public hearing. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, it's removed. Beardsley, seconded Hart, to close the public hearing. All those in favors, state by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Ayes have it. All right.
I have the density for the R3, if you'd like to know that, too. If you.
Yeah.
Okay, so the R3, one-bedroom units was 18 per acre, whereas in the R3A, it was 12 per acre. R3 for two-bedroom units is 14 per acre. R3A was 10 units per acre. R3 for three and four-bedroom units is 11 per acre. And in the R3A, it is nine, three-to-four bedrooms per acre. Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, that's fine. Thank you, Chris. All right, comments from Planning Commission members.
I guess I've got some, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I remember Cascade. I liked the concept. It felt, it felt right on that place. We did phenomenal job. It's, it's perfect transition for that neighborhood, I felt. And as I recall, it was going to professional office, or professional service to the multifamily. And that felt right to me. This feels not as right to me. And that's to say, nothing of the challenges that Mr. Barry has identified in terms of, how do you use this site? Because I think it's really a difficult site to develop. And, but I have a hard time getting to multifamily on this property. And when, when we have a feature land use, and we're asked to change from that, I always take the approach of trying to be open-minded, but at the same point, holding the standard of, tell me why this is a better idea. And I just can't get there with this. Last comment I'll make is, I see a lot of residential development. And when we lose industrial property, or other commercial property to residential, I'm concerned about the long-term effects on tax base and employment. And I, and I say that intrudively, because I don't have any data on it. And I've wondered if we have any information that allows us to go back 10, 20, 30 years and do a trend line of the mix of property that's tax-based, and how it contributes to sort of the long-term financial health of that community. Not, not an issue for this project, but one that I think is going to come before us a lot more and more, as we see more, this is a great place to live, a place to build homes in. And we've got to maintain some balance there.
Cheryl, do you have any comments?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Dean?
One of my things when I look at this is, we're trying to find a different mixture of housing for the city of Saline. It's been clear that that's what everybody's been talking about. And I look at this lot, it's next to the health service type facility, which could change, but right now, there's a critical. The court's next door, I don't know how that court got in here, whether it's special use, I don't know if I can look at it. But that was kind of the thing I recall when we did that one. But it seems like we've been doing a lot of special use permits and activity along this corridor, you know, 20, 30 years ago, we thought it was going to develop faster. And it's become more related to closer to town, we wanted to walk a little bit. And in fact, that building's across the street. Almost have a transition type situation where somebody's in this type of situation, moving over into the square or whatever. I don't disagree with the, the idea that we have more of a property, industrial. I think potentially, we're going to move that to some types of annexation, hopefully, at other locations. I just, I look for a lot that I think is appropriate for a different change. The fact that the courthouse is next door, the thing across the street, the schools, those aren't going to change in any time in the future. It seemed like this would fit into the, hopefully, be in the, if it had been in the middle of the industrial park, that's just. It seems like this would fit into the, hopefully, be in the, if it had been in the middle of the industrial part, actually not. But because we've got such a mixed use from here, and again, I'd like to know whether we gave a special use permit for court. Can you do a similar type of thing with this development? If it was applied, can you use that, grant that as a special use within the industrial, so not having to be so problematic. But I think that, Chris. That's just my sense.
Courthouse, if it's organized, it would be construction, boy, it's a pretty big fight.
Well, theoretically has been sort of an apartment for the last twenty-five years. Chris, I have a question, and I know, I know this question has come up, and I just can't remember the answer. If Danny here decides to just, if we change this zoning the way it is, and Danny decides to just decide, okay, I'm not going to do this, can the zoning go with this project, or does it stay the, the, uh, the three rate?
Oh, once, once, once you rezone a property, it stays as that, and any, the use permitted in that district would be allowed there. I'm looking to see, I can't recall, and maybe somebody there can answer it faster than I can find it, if there was conditional zoning allowed, because that would be one, an option, that if, if conditional zoning, contractual zoning, something like that could take place where if it's rezoned, this is to R three, it can only be used for this type of project, and that this project does not go through, then it, it will revert back to the industrial zoning.
Chris, if you recall, I think it was during the summer of twenty nineteen, we tried to encourage the then owners of the old schoolhouse at Michigan Ave at Hill Pond.
Oh, yes.
Consider a conditional contractual rezoning for their micro distillery.
Yeah.
As a way of set, or alleviating some of the concerns of their residential neighbor.
Yes, I do remember that now.
They chose not to pursue that, but that was a, an option that was encouraged by both myself and the then city manager as a way of, of bridging the divide between the competing interests.
Yes, I do, I do have some documentation on that. That I had provided them, or I recall writing them out. So that, that may be an option, then also, which would allow him to do, you know, to proceed, but in the event that it doesn't, just like a conditional or special land use after so long, or if it doesn't proceed, or if the development doesn't occur, then it'll stay rezoned, or stay zoned as it currently is.
Excellent. I would be completely open to that, especially land use or conditional. I would, I would be totally aligned with that.
Chris, if, if the developer went the route of additional rezoning, what additional materials does he need to submit or fill out?
I think in the case that you mentioned earlier, they were just going to do, I think they were just going to resubmit for rezone, and we're going to treat it as conditional rezoning. And then typically the planning commission or the city council is not allowed to make any suggestions as to what those conditions of the rezoning will be. Those have to be brought forth by the applicant. Otherwise, it's kind of, in a sense, strong-arming them, strong-arming them into what the city would like to see as opposed to kind of negotiating. But, yeah, they would have to, I think it, if I could find that, if you give me a second, I can, I can find.
Chris, you might not be able to find it because they never actually submitted for conditional zoning. We want.
I had wrote them outlining what they had to do.
Come on, he's looking. Dean, I think I've seen your question on the courthouse. Based on the I two zoning, all permitted uses in I one are allowed, and one of the permitted uses in our office buildings, I have that. So I'm pretty sure that a courthouse could easily qualifies that.
Would that special condition go along with the site plan approval? Is that something that would happen, or would it be a whole nother process prior to, before the site plan? Begin approval for conditional rezoning and then submit your preliminary or combined final site.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, it'd be up to you, but if that's the way you want, and when the recent site plan falls through, you drop out of the project, that goes, that goes back.
I have an answer. Or can this one be conditioned? Could this become a conditional? This meeting, again, I'm making an assumption, if the, if the commission's okay with it, could it become conditional at this meeting, or does another meeting have to be done to get that conditional zoning?
Yeah, while I think it may create an additional burden for you and for potential planning commissioners, my punch is that you have to resubmit. Is that right, Chris?
I would suggest that because the public hearing did not mention conditional rezoning.
Right? Excellent question to you. Oh, okay, please. I understand there's limited building sites available for your type of development, but what, is it possible south of Cascade Point, which I know is low right now? Is there any option of incorporating some of them into the city and then allowing the development there?
Dan, that's an excellent question. Mr. Barry can probably speak at length about this as can another, as, as can at least two other developers who have inquired about annexing that site, and it has yet to be revealed. But yes, that would be, in terms of low hanging fruit, at least on the surface, that would be an ideal parcel to annex because you have utilities in the vicinity. It's a peninsula, so it essentially jets out, but bordered by the city on, on three of the four sides. But for a variety of reasons, mostly because of the current deed holders, because we have not been able to bridge a divide within the city. That's a very good question.
So we're at a crossroads. We recommend to basically table this, and let him come back with another proposal, or do we approve what's going on tonight?
Yeah, what would be the proper procedure? Is it tabled, or do we?
We would pull, if, if the consensus is to have Mr. Barry and his associate resubmit for conditional contractual rezoning, then I would just say we would postpone action on the, the motion that's before us.
I'd say you postpone. I'd have Mr. Barry just write a quick email saying formally withdraw, say that if this, I'd wait until the county council. And then we just, we just do this in a couple of weeks.
I just want to emphasize, I, I like this project. I think it will go very well there, I believe, but I worry about what Chris brings up down the line, if this thing decides to just drop, what else could go in?
And that would be why I wouldn't give you the reassurance that I provide for the conditional. Now, that creates a little bit of a delay, but I think that's probably the way that we could. Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem, and I completely understand the concern.
I think as we look at these types of developments, moving forward, things in the city, and even the future planning has changed with the entire issue with how you can house it and such, so. Fortunately for this one, though, it's kind of a continuation of what we've been doing all of that whole corridor, except for electronics, but you don't know at some point that kind of lets go.
Very true.
It's very eclectic in that corridor.
Yeah. But it also has our library, it has a school. It's very intriguing that I said from above, presidential building, been close to the center.
Walk, walk distance.
So there's reasons why we zone it for that. I feel it's sort of about changing the design too. It's that, that property has been down fifty years, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's, it's.
So because this is enumerated council action, enumerated action, and councils again as well, assuming that the motion carries to both parties, we just remove it from my base agenda.
Yep, and now it's an update tomorrow, planning, that's a very decisive withdrawal of this application. That looks to be a note, if we're throwing that application, no longer.
Yeah, there'll be something. Because this has to go back out to advertisement for.
So, so that, that's why.
So it wouldn't be on November, it would be on.
It, it could potentially be on November.
Oh, so I'll get you everything tomorrow. Faster you submit, faster you turn around.
You can tell if this will work out well.
So, Mr. Chair, then I would make a motion to postpone action on, on the subsequent motion. For a motion to postpone, we have to give a date certain. You think it could get on the second meeting?
But at the end of the day, this decision right now, it's going to be withdrawn. So this will go away. So you can stay the first meeting in November. Then soon as they officially withdraw, then you guys will have a brand new.
Yeah, what's the first meeting in November then?
Katrina, do you have that? I think it's.
It's the eighteenth.
We only meet once, no.
We have enough time to post for consideration if you have to give the public.
Yeah, right, Katrina, you think we're good, since it's a month away?
Yeah, um, the latest I can send to the papers would be October thirtieth for the public hearing.
All right, so move to postpone a date certain of November eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Sure, a second. It's been moved, Brian, seconded Dean, to postpone to November eighteenth. All those in favors, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, I don't think anybody's missing. So we adjourn at, there is a motion to adjourn at seven forty-one. So move Dan, seconded. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes carried.